Five o'clock meeting the order. What a blessing to see you all here. Item number one. I even choke on it as I say it. Is the discussion of the proposal to allow the keeping of hens as a conditional use within residential zoning district subject to minimal standards.
Yes, sir.
I certainly am not going to take that on you.
I'll start shaking my head.
That's right.
Boy, Eric's gonna queue up something. So, you know, I know it's been a little while since we've talked about this. And so if y'all don't mind me just kind of resetting it, especially that might be helpful for those in the audience and those who may be watching at home or wherever they may be watching the stream. But, you know, an ordinance was introduced back in the spring that would allow the keeping of hens. And, you know, we had proposed that the maximum number would be six, you know, which is in line with what is allowed within the city of Newberry and is comparable to what's allowed in Prosperity. As a conditional use within our residential zoning districts. And, you know, the county has four primary residential zoning districts. There RS, RSM, RSV, and general residential or RG. The vast majority of the county is owned R2, which allows residential uses, but we categorize that as rural and agricultural. So we've also got that zoning classification. It was brought to our attention that the keeping of hens was not permitted in the current ordinance, which, you know, when, you know, I'm kind of new to our ordinance, you know, just only haven't been here a little over a year. And I was kind of surprised by that, you know, and I thought, well, I don't think that's accurate, you know. So I started looking through the ordinance and, you know, sure enough, it is. Now, when we say that the hens are not allowed to be kept on residential properties, there is not an express or stated prohibition. That's not how single use or multi-use zoning works or like Euclidean zoning, you know, where you have different zoning classifications, where you group properties that are similar in use and type together. That's not how it works. How it works is you identify the uses that are permitted on those properties and you do it in a table. And so we have three categories of uses that are allowed in each zoning district. There are permitted uses, and those would be things that they don't require any form of additional approval by the county. County council has said that that these uses are permitted in these different zoning districts. And, you know, a person can obtain a building permit if they have to build something, or if they have to modify their property. There's no zoning issue, at least with regard to use when it's permitted. There are conditional uses which are permitted, but there are certain conditions that have to be met in order to do it. And so, you know, an example of that is, you know, we're recommending the conditional zoning approach with the henkeeping, because there are a few, some standards there that we've proposed related to the coop and the placement, the location of the coop, or the run for the chickens, and the size of it on the property. And so those are like conditions. And so what the staff would do is you come in and you want permission to do that. And in this case, it would likely be Katie Words, Ms. Words. And she would just make sure that all those boxes that require a check, have a check. And if it is, then hey, you're good to go. The other type is special exception. And special uses are a lot like conditional uses, but it's the zoning board that approves it. And there's a public hearing, and there's notice provided to adjoining property owners through the placement of a sign and an advertisement in the newspaper. There's more, I guess, notice and due process involved with special exceptions. And so each one of those identifies the type of use that's either permitted, allowed conditionally, or allowed as a special use. And the way that those uses are identified is by something called a NACs code. And it's a six-digit code that uniquely identifies about every type of thing there is that you can do, or business you could operate under the sun. And it's maintained by the federal government. It's revised every five years, and it's used extensively by cities and counties for things like zoning. We don't have one, the city does, but our towns do too. But a business license, it would identify the type of business and the rate class that business goes in. So we use those NACs codes. Well, if you don't see the NACs code in the table, then more than likely, it is not a permitted use, or a conditional use, or a special use, unless you flip through the ordinance and you find an exception that is explicit. And I'll give you an example of that. We allow horses for recreational use. Somebody might, some people might call it a horse farm. But like, if you want to have a horse or more than one horse, and they're at your home, and it's accessory, it's not the primary use of the property, your home is on that property, you can have horses, but there are certain conditions that are met. And, you know, one that stands out in my mind that I always remember is your property has to be two acres or larger. There are others, not many, but there are others. But that's the, that's the first one. And so there's also a provision in our ordinance, in the, in the table identifying, you know, the things that can be on a piece of property and what it can be used for, related to agricultural buildings. So, you know, outbuildings, barns, silos, and those, those types of, you know, improvements to properties. Those are permitted in R2, our rural district. You know, we kind of were talking about that as somewhat separate from our residential districts. They are not permitted in the other districts. And so the combination of how we handled recreational horses, and also the language that's in there related to agricultural accessory structures, led to the conclusion that there is no NACs code. We have that language with the structures. We have the provisions for recreational, you know, horse, horsekeeping. Therefore, in the absence of a language like that for chicken, henkeeping, it would not be permitted. That was how that conclusion was reached. And so, you know, what we tried to bring to y'all was just something that would be more appropriate for Newberry County. I think it's just a case where, you know, when you adopt, well, here's the zoning ordinance here. I mean, when you adopt something like this, and you do a lot of it at the same time, sometimes things go through that were just not identified, or not anticipated, or there was some form of unintended consequence. And that's why this thing is a living document. It comes back to y'all periodically to make changes and improve and fix things that maybe you just weren't caught to begin with. So then the question becomes, you know, after, hey, does council want to address this? Or does council disagree with our interpretation of them? I mean, we feel, you know, solid on that interpretation, but, you know, would be, okay, well, how do you want to address it? And we felt like the conditional use was the, probably the best approach for us to take. It's in line with the horsekeeping. And we just would need to kind of zero in on, okay, well, what are some of those conditions? And so on the screen, we've got something for you, and those who may be watching, that I think could be helpful. You know, right now, everything's kind of grayed out. You can see Newberry County in the center. And let me just kind of show you some layers. This is, you know, Brian, our new GIS analyst, has put together a tool here he calls a dashboard that we can use for many things. And in this case, we're using it for the henkeeping analysis. Let me just show you right now, the properties in the county that are R2. So this would be the zoning district where, right now, you can have hens, you can have roosters, and you can have as many of them as you want. That's where you can have them right now. And nothing in the ordinance that was proposed back in the spring sought to modify that in any way.
And you're talking, and that's the white area?
That's right, that lighter color, that light blue, or yeah, it kind of looks whitish on the screen. And you can see, some of the larger voids are the municipalities. You know, you can see Silver Street here, and Prosperity, and Newberry, and, you know, Little Mountain, and so forth. You'll notice here, although it kind of shows up almost like a buffer, but you can see properties along the lake, which are not R2. And then we've got some other things. I believe this is zoned industrial. This was the, you know, proposed solar farm, one of the initial ones that was approved before we went to the special exception. So that, you know, there's Whitmire's up here. But by and large, most of the county, you can see the lion's share of the county, is R2. And it's not affected at all by this ordinance. Again, you can have roosters, you can have chickens, and you can have as many of them as you want. Now, let me show you, and I'm gonna turn it off, just for the sake of making it simple. Here are properties that are zoned residential, but not R2, if we're kind of thinking about R2 as, as a residential district. And you'll kind of notice, and I probably need to zoom in a little bit. But we've got some along 72 and 176 outside of Whitmire, outside of town. We have some residential developments occurred around the city that has not occurred within city limits. And you'll see that those properties are zoned residential. And this is helpful. I should have put this up to begin with. These are the colors of the zone. So R2 is not shown, so you can disregard the top color. But the yellow is general residential. You know, you can have manufactured homes and multifamily. And it's our smallest minimum lot size. I believe it's 10,000 square feet that, you know, the lot has to be at least that. Then you can see that we've got the single-family residential. This is single-family residential that also allows manufactured home, the RSM, it's green. And then RSV is single-family residential that also allows RVs. And so that was a kind of a carve-out with that zone. So you can see we've got some of that around the city. Let me zoom out a little bit. Lake Greenwood, you know, we've got it there. And then, you know, the other major area, and it's the, it's the largest area, although there's a good bit around Newberry, is on the lake. And you can see those areas that appear to be like buffer are now colored. And it just has all those residentially zoned properties that are not agriculture. They're not zoned R2. Now, some of them could qualify for R2 zoning. And I think we've had a few individuals that have kind of questioned this ordinance and have made suggestions on changes, and, which is good. I mean, that feedback was great. And that may be the best solution for them, for that ordinance to be modified. But another solution they could look at is rezoning their property. Now, that is a legislative act, so it's going to have to go through the planning commission, and then it would come to council. But their properties touch R2, and, or otherwise large enough to have R2 zoning. So you'll notice that some of the larger, like polygons, the shapes on the map, the properties, you know, I mean, they're up a size, and they're touching R2 to where, you know, they, you know, potentially could be rezoned. Now, let me show you, this is another layer, and this would be residentially zoned properties. So one of those four that we just talked about, categories that touch R2. And so it, oh, I'm sorry, I clicked on the wrong one. That touch R2. Because we thought, you know, I thought y'all might want to see that. You know, this would be kind of like, look, thinking about it in terms of like, the frontier. about it in terms of like, the frontier between R2 and the residential districts. And you can see, it kind of, sort of follows that northern, at least along the lake, the northern edge of the development that's occurred along the lake, you know? It's kind of, kind of interesting to look at. And of course, we've got a ring around the city, you know, where we had, have had development occur outside of the city residentially, that we zone. Well, I mean, you've got some frontier there. And of course, you've got it along Lake Greenwood, too, because once you get off the lake, you're in a very, very rural area. So we wanted y'all to kind of see that. The other thing we wanted to share with you is sort of a breakdown of these properties that are residential, are not R2, they're not agricultural, and how big they are. And so let me turn the, oops, let me turn the legend on here. And so you'll see that the darker color, and I'll zoom in so you can actually see it, is zero, is less than half an acre in size. The green is a half to a full acre. The sort of royal blue is one acre to five acres. And then the light blue is anything over five acres. And again, we're only looking, we're not talking about any other zoning districts, but the four residential ones. And the reason that we put this layer together was anticipation of council, possibly, maybe not, but turning it in the direction of, okay, if we're going to allow henkeeping, if we feel like we need to address this, and right now, henkeeping is not allowed in those four zoning districts, or at least that's how we're interpreting the ordinance, which we want to fix. And we decide, hey, one-size-fits-all is not what we want to do. We want to tailor the number of hens you can have, based on the size of the property. We tried to do a breakdown there, where you could see, okay, if we treated properties differently by size, and these numbers could change, but if we followed these breakpoints or thresholds, what would that look like on the map? You know, how much diversity would you have, and differences would you have, like say, within a neighborhood, or within a, an area at the micro level? And so that's what the whole idea was behind this layer. And you could see, I mean, there are some differences there. And you've got some properties that would, you know, if the number of hens you can have increases with increasing size, well, you know, you're going to have some differences, and have them right beside one another. And of course, the more you do that, there's, you know, I guess, some tension between that and the enforceability of it, or what goes into enforcing it, because you've made it more complicated. Or I say, I'm not, I don't mean council, but you know, we, as a county, have made it a little more complicated to administer. So I know, y'all will probably want to kind of strike a little bit of a balance there, between, you know, complexity, and tailoring needs, and then, you know, actually administering it if we were to move forward with this. So that's kind of what it looks like, from a 100,000-foot view. Do y'all have any questions at this point, just sort of about the geography of some of this?
I do have a little comment. Jeff, if you'll go back and zoom in on what you just showed us. You see the larger pieces of property, and the smaller ones stepping up in size as you identified. And they're also, they're then joining R2, which is the area above them. If you do it by size, then even if you step down with those larger parcels, in the, what's that, five-acre size, or 10-acre size, no matter what, you're eventually going to get a border between a small lot where somebody's restricted to, I don't know, five hens. And the next guy across the adjoining property can have 50 hens. And it doesn't matter whether your adjoining property, is that R2, coming down here and touching some of this larger pieces, or the smaller pieces. You're always going to have a case, if you do it by size, where you're going to have, the neighbor can have, in some cases, as many hens and roosters as they want, or in some other cases, the neighbor's going to have his 50 hens, or 20 hens, and you're only going to be allowed to have four hens. I don't know, whatever. So, I don't think you're ever gonna, if you do it by size, instead of by zone, you're going to always have a case where your neighbor has got the approval opportunity to have more hens than you. I mean, you, so, I just, I'm not sure that...
Way harder to keep up with, too.
If you keep reducing it by how many hens, by each one of those sizes, you have really burdened our zoning people to administer that.
Enforcement would be a nightmare.
And I know the biggest issue, the phone calls that I've gotten, has basically been because the hens running all over the neighbor's yard, or the smell. And that's the biggest issue.
And that really was the idea. Now, I mean, you know, the details could change. I mean, what we tried to bring y'all was something that struck a balance, and addressed with the conditional use zoning approach, some things that could happen that would impact an adjoining homeowner, but give them the ability to have hens.
I don't mind the idea, but like I said, it's going to be a nightmare for zoning to, and enforcement people, when you do it like that.
So you, you're not going to have, there's no way that we can zone this where it's going to make everybody happy.
No way.
That's not going to happen. We do have, under R2, throughout the county, this doesn't even apply. We're basically talking about a very small population within our county. And even within that small population, I'd venture to say, there are not a lot of them that want hens, because that's something else they got to keep up with. So we are, we're going to great lengths to, and we should, to protect everybody's freedoms and liberties. But we can't make everybody happy. And we're, we've got a small population we're catering to. That's all I'm saying.
I, I understand, I agree with what Mr. Hip is saying. We have certainly gone to extreme lengths in trying to satisfy everybody. And I don't think we're ever going to satisfy everybody, for sure, without a doubt. I mean, there's just, there's no way you're going to ever do that. I do think that we need to do this, to allow this to be at least a minimal conditional use for those areas, for those folks that do want to have hens. And I have gotten way more phone calls this past couple of weeks since our last meeting, than what I had gotten prior to that. I had gotten a good many prior to that, but this past couple of weeks, I've gotten a good many. And it is, of all the folks that has called, the major complaint concern that they have had, has been around whether they're going to smell it, or whether they're going to see it, or whether they're going to hear it. That's where it's all stemmed back to. That was their concern, you know? Some of them were concerned from an environmental standpoint, but I will be honest with you, if you really start looking at numbers, and we can run USDA and RCS numbers, these six hens are going to produce way, way less of an environmental concern than a couple of Great Dane dogs, or full-grown labs. I mean, it just, the environmental side of it kind of goes away. But the, you know, the concern for hens running loose, birds running loose, they didn't want that. They were concerned about the look of a chicken coop. You know, they didn't necessarily want to have to see it. And then certainly, they were worried about smell, all right? So those were the concerns of the folks that were opposed, you know, or had concerns with it. Most of the folks called me, thinking that we were trying to ban chickens in various...
That's right.
That was by far the vast majority of the calls that I received, which was probably, I don't know, I lost count beyond a dozen. But anyway, that was by far the vast majority of the calls that I got, was folks thinking we were trying to eliminate it. And I said, no, that's not what we're trying to do. We're trying to do the opposite of that. And then, and then I had some folks that had these larger tracts, that they had gone online and realized that their properties were not zoned rural, even though they were, you know, felt like they were in a rural area, they realized that their property was not zoned rural. And you know, it was a 10, 15, 20, even, one guy had 30 something acres, you know, and he thought he was in a rural area. And you know, he's, you know, saying, you know, hey, I don't have any intention of having chickens, but you know, I feel like I have 30 something acres, I should be able to have chickens if I want them. So, anyway, you know, we're not going to satisfy everybody. I'll be honest with you, I kind of hate the idea of setting it by, by the size of the property, mainly because those folks that didn't get captured, of being in that zoned area, not do anything because of anything they've done, just because that's where they own property, and that's what that area got zoned for. So I do like the idea of giving those folks the capability of having more than, you know, four hens, or five hens, whatever it was, or six, whatever the number was. You know, I understand, you may have one property that has, you know, capability of having unlimited, or a larger number than a neighboring property. But if I only have an acre's worth of land, I can't expect to have, you know, or I should not be, I shouldn't have the expectation that I can have as many hens on my property as my neighbor could, who's got 30, 35 acres. You know, I should not have, that's not a reasonable expectation, in my mind. But I don't think that that guy that has that 35 acres, who, you know, has no intention of having a residential development for his property, should be, have that liberty taken away from him, of being able to have more than six hens. I mean, I just, that's just my thought. And I understand the implementation of it, you know, that certainly would be difficult. I get that. But my personal thought is, I don't want to limit that person's ability to have that use of his property. I certainly don't want to encroach on anybody, any neighbor around there. So the sighting criteria, and what we have in the ordinance, as far as having it to be screened, it had, they have to be maintained inside a structure. There has to be a plan in place for how they're going to handle the manure, and you know, whatnot, all of that, that's great. I think that's needed in order to eliminate the possibility of these concerns that these folks have had to be, which has been the smell, the eyesight, and the noise. Those are the three. And I think our ordinance that we have proposed does that. But I don't like the idea of limiting what the use of an individual who has a larger tract of land is limited to. I think that's a blanket limitation, and I don't, I think we need to come up with something different. That's just my thought. And like I said, y'all can disagree with me, but that's just my thought.
I don't disagree with you. I'm thinking about implementation, though.
I agree.
I mean, it becomes a law, and then you got to implement the law. And right now, we have laws on the books that we're not regulating. And to me, that's a really bad place to be. I like what you're saying. I think maybe we should allow up to six hens on certain residential districts. R2, of course, there is no limit. And then we could have a conditional approval beyond, say, if our number's six, if you've got larger property, and you want more than six, then you could get a conditional, you could go and apply for a conditional. And the conditions could be set up based on size of property, not based on different districts. So we could approve them by district, within requirements that don't infringe on noise, and odor, and all of that, and visual. But then, then if you've got larger property, and you want more chickens than that, you can go and ask for a conditional approval based on size of property.
But that doesn't, that doesn't put more of a burden on the folks to have to make that judgment call. Rather than just saying, you know, you know, if you have X-size property, this is what you're going to go with, X-size property.
But what if you got somebody with four tenths of an acre, and you got somebody with five tenths of an acre, and basically, one of them's got a bigger house on it, and the land size is almost the same, and you got one of them that you've limited chickens, and the other one, you got more chickens? I mean, to me, you go to the zoning people, and that's why I'm thinking that...
I understand, I agree with you.
You know, there's going to be a cutoff somewhere on acreage, and somebody's going to have a little more, and somebody's going to have a little less. And the actual difference between the two is minuscule, but somebody's going to get chick, six chickens, and somebody else is going to...
Get 12, or 20, or whatever.
I don't know.
You're going to have to hire a whole, a whole crew just to go count chickens.
Well, and after you approve it, I mean, who's, you haven't eliminated the person who says, okay, I want, I got six chickens, I want six chickens on my property, and then go out and buy seven, or eight. I mean, we don't have zoning people out there to go riding around this county to count chickens.
We're not witch hunting, we're just trying to get it better.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Bottom line's, we're trying to make it better than it was. Because you weren't supposed to have any.
A lot of the calls I got dealt with, having to get a permit, and how much fee they had to pay just to be able to have chickens on their property.
You know, and that's one thing I should clarify, and I mean, I guess, some people might would say it's semantics, but you know, I talked about a conditional use permit fee, you know, like a zoning permit fee. Some cities and counties actually issue a zoning permit, and then some don't. And we're an example, we don't do it, the city, you know, we didn't do it there. You get building permits, but you just get a zoning approval, you know, verification that, hey, yeah, your property's zoned, you can do what it is you want to do, and now we'll issue you building permits. But we do have a fee to go out and mark the location of like, a principal structure or an accessory structure. And that's what that chicken coop would be. You know, you're going to go out, and you're going to mark it in relationship to the property lines, to make sure that setbacks are met. And there is a charge associated with that. And of course, the rationale for that is, you know, we're sending a county employee to that location, you know, to take those measurements. And so there, so it's not really a zoning permit fee, which is the term I used at the meeting back in, I guess, June. It's a, it's a fee to verify setbacks.
I had a couple of calls as well, they didn't like the idea of them having to pay a fee. But what I told them was, you know, listen, it's one of those situations to where if we're going to require somebody to go out there and do something on the property to verify that you're not encroaching on somebody else's liberties and freedoms, then you got to pay a fee for that. And the individual who utilizes that program pays for that program. And that's, and that's where that comes from. And that's not just county, that's state as well, so federally.
And just for clarification, if you, because most of my territory is all R2, I just have very few. If you're going to build, if you're going to have chickens on R2, do you have to get a permit and have somebody come out and look at it?
It's a permitted use, yeah. The only thing with R2 is kind of like any zoning district, if there's construction for, you know, a building, or, you know, re-verify setbacks, you know, and mark that. But no, I mean, it, there wouldn't be, there wouldn't be a requirement to have a coop. And there's no, like, chicken permit that you, yeah, you have to obtain, so.
Because there was some confusion amongst a lot of people, they were thinking, oh, now you're going to charge us for having chickens? oh, now you're going to charge us for having chickens?
No.
I I would just say, I think we got some, a little bit of bad media that said we were going to limit chickens and that was never our intent. Our intent was to open the door, not to close the door um on that. So um, I I I would just remind myself, if not everybody else, that we're in this because of bad neighbors. We assume that if Nick and I live side by side, I can go over and say, Nick, I don't like what you're doing, and Nick could go, I'm sorry, Todd, I'll fix that. And the truth is, those days of civility are are really non-existent in a lot of places. And so, um, I I I do think that we should look at doing this, um, and allowing people to do this. If not, you could open Pandora's box and the last thing you want is be on a half acre or a tract and your neighbor have roosters, uh, because you would never get any sleep. If you if you think you've got trouble now, you ain't had trouble yet. Um, but I do think I um that something along the lines of the uh number, the acreage versus the number is is a reasonable consideration. I do think the, I like Les' idea of the conditional use beyond that so that we control that. You basically set a bright line, but then you go conditional beyond that. I do like the use of that. Uh, I do think we should be cognizant of that permit fee and understand that people think we're trying to tax them to use their own land when the reality is it's exact the opposite. We're trying to, um, as a dear friend of mine, who I love dearly, called me the day after our last meeting and said, I've never seen people so upset about government trying to de-restrict their land, not restrict it. And so I do think we have to balance that out. Um, but I I I think that that there needs to be a balance here, um, but as, again, I go back to what Les said, you know, basically the the neighbor who, we started this, we had called us out for not enforcing their own ordinance and, um, the last thing you want to get into is deliberate indifference, which is a cause of action. And so I think we 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 need to balance this and I think we need to to find a way to let people use their property, but balance it in a way that um is respectful of your neighbors as well. I think our cities have done that, I think with my Newberry and Prosperity have all have been able to accomplish that, and I think we can accomplish that well. So I I think there's a compromise. The problem with compromise is both sides usually end up mad at you.
And I I would like to say one other thing, because we got a a lot of uh concerns from citizens that we were in fact taking away personal liberties and freedoms. And uh I heard somebody make a comment about our ordinance and I thought, that can't be right. It was right.
It was right, I saw the email, it was right.
And so our ordinance, when it was accepted, was probably, we were, as we always are, short on time and resources and in a hurry, and we adopted uh some boilerplate uh ordinance language in our ordinances, and some of that boilerplate language does not fit us in our circumstances.
Correct.
And so that comment about um shrubbery and distance to trees and so forth, that was, that was meant originally in whatever ordinance we used as boilerplate to restrict uh in a commercial development or in a
That's right.
...plain housing development, that was not in any way meant to restrict people throughout the county, whether they live in R2 rural or whether they live in RS or any of the other districts, as to how they put their shrubbery and flowers in their yard. And that was a, uh, when that was brought to my attention, like I said, at first, I thought, no, that can't be true, and it was. And so at this time, we do need to go back through our ordinance and catch some of those or those areas that don't apply or 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 are being improperly uh identified, and I won't say improperly uh controlled, because those languages have never been controlled.
Correct.
Our zoning people have never implemented reg- uh controls over that, but it's in there. So if we got a law that we're not, it's not correct and we're not implementing it, by God, we need to change it.
Absolutely.
So, anyway, now's a good time for our uh zoning folks to take a good look at all of that and eliminate that that shouldn't be there or modify it, uh, with all that extra time and resource that they have now that they didn't have originally.
They didn't pull up mid-ride chickens. I like it.
Anybody else? I think I hear the consensus is that we have some interest in this, but we'd like to see it worded a little differently to try to get it. Is that what I'm hearing from everybody or... Okay, I think so. So can we go back to the drawing board a little bit on this and see what we can come up with, please?
We will do. One other, one other thing I happen to think about before we get off of it completely. Um, I I think I go back to what uh Chairman Johnson mentioned about uh neighbors getting along. Um, and I think, I think we do need to have some language in there that if if the adjoining neighbors are uh okay with whatever use the individual's going to do, then then maybe there needs to be some waiver uh that that maybe could be obtained, uh, if if you have a situation where neighbors are okay with it, then we consider that in some way, shape or form, so. I I completely agree, and I think it's DSS, but somebody has this written into the state statute that I'd like to see, and that is frivolous complaints. If you file X number of frivolous complaints against your neighbor, then you become liable for that and you actually could be fined for filing frivolous complaints.
Okay.
It, because basically they begin to abuse the county process and the county taxpayer dollar to wage war against their neighbor. And so I would like to see that considered as well.
Absolutely.
And it could be, also, when you have conditional use, uh, maybe, Joni, maybe you can tell me whether this is possible under your conditions, that using what Leon has said, that you're, one of the conditions is that you don't have objection from your contiguous property owners.
Yeah.
And if you have no objection, then that pushes that condition.
Right, I like it.
Or even support?
Yes.
If you go the other way.
I like it, I like it in the best, yeah, letter of support rather than no objection, because those are...
Right.
That sounds like the same thing, but it's very different.
Yeah, yeah, I like that.
But I also think if you're living in a residential area, there's got to be some type of restrictions.
That's right, that's right. I don't want somebody on a half acre lot next to us having three hundred chickens out there. There ain't no way they're not going to end up on my property.
It flows down, like, some of those lots are extremely small, a house, they're a little lot.
Yes, they are.
They don't even hardly have room to park a vehicle.
Much less.
There's really, really, yeah, it gets pretty tight down here.
Definitely.
All right, is that pretty clear direction from us?
It is, yeah.
Okay, all right, great.
That's really helpful.
All right, item number two on our agenda is legal matters. Was that scheduled for executive session or are we doing this in open session?
Executive.
Okay, all right, I wasn't sure. All right, is there uh legal matters, is there a motion that we go into executive session? Motion by Mr. Hip, second by Mr. Shealy, is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands, and opposed likewise, motion carries unanimously. We stand in the executive session, uh, realizing the time of day that it is related.
We come out of executive session, motion by Mr. Reader, second by Mr. Fulmer. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands. The Newberry County Council met in the executive session for the aforementioned reasons. No action was taken. Is there a motion that we adjourn our five o'clock work session? Motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Mr. Reader that we adjourn our five o'clock work session. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise. Motion carries unanimously. We stand adjourned for the next, um, two minutes. This is our agenda from this app, this morning. If you want to look through what we, what we went through today. All right, it is of the hour. We will call our six o'clock regularly scheduled council meeting to order. We would ask the Honorable Nick Shealy, Vice Chair, to have our invocation and pledge of allegiance, please.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for your love and your grace. I pray that you will be with each of us represented here today. Give us the wisdom to make decisions that are in the best interest of the citizens of Newberry County. Make the things we do and the decisions we make be pleasing in your sight. Lord, please be with our armed forces, law enforcement, and first responders. Keep them safe as they put their lives at risk to protect us. We humbly ask these things in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Let this lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is such a blessing to see such a great crowd here tonight. We are always glad when, uh, uh, the community and the citizens come out and are aware of and input into what's going on at the, uh, at the county level as far as government. Item number one on our agenda is the adoption of the consent agenda. Unless there is exception, we would take those as one item. The, the consent agenda consists of the council work session of September 4th and the county council meeting of September 4th, the minutes from both those meetings. Hearing no objection, is there a motion? We accept those. Mr. Hilt makes the motion. Reverend Scurry makes the second. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands and opposed likewise, carries unanimously. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion that we adopt the agenda as published? Reverend Scurry makes that motion. Mr. Shealy makes the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor by show of hands and opposed likewise, the motion carries unanimously. Item number three on our agenda is recognitions, which is our favorite part. I know I speak for all of councilmen say that we enjoy this. We enjoy when those who make Newberry County so great and so special get acknowledged. And so, thank you for being here. And Mr. Shaker, we turn it over to you to, to take it from here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, evening, everybody. It's nice to have such a large crowd here. And part of the reason we have large crowds too, we have fairly large numbers of people. So that helps with the crowd. So it's great to have everyone here this evening. Uh, our first employee that we recognize is Caleb Hurstead. We appreciate you joining us. It's a pleasure to recognize Caleb for five years of service in law enforcement in Newberry County. Caleb joined the Sheriff's Department back in 2019, so five years ago, and was promoted to SRO, which is his current position. And he's currently assigned to Newberry Middle School. And Caleb, in addition to serving as the SRO, volunteers as a coach. Uh, he helps with other programs at school. And I think that is a key to how he is so effective in his role. Because what he's done is he's developed a really good rapport with the students and faculty at Newberry Middle School. And with familiarity and, and rapport like that comes trust. And so, he's got, he's developed a lot of trust, uh, among the students and all. It just makes him a, a great asset there. And so, Caleb.
The boss has arrived.
So Caleb, we, we appreciate everything you do. For your family, but for everyone else's family too. You keep our students safe, faculty safe, and our citizens safe. And we just can't thank you enough. And that's on behalf of county council, and we've got a number of county departments here. Thank you for all that you do. Okay, stay in our department. Our second employee is Devin Kingsmore. How are you doing?
How are you, sir?
Good, man. I'm a chief of the, yeah, pleasure to be here this evening, sir. It's a pleasure to recognize you for five years of service as well. Uh, you know, just like Caleb, he came to workforce, Devin did, five years ago. And like Devin, he was promoted to SRO. I want to say, was it last October?
Last November.
Last November, okay. So coming up on a year here as SRO. Now, uh, what Devin covers though are three elementary schools in the mid Carolina zone. He has Pomeria, Little Mountain, and Prosperity. Uh, and then, you know, a lot like Caleb, I mean, you've developed really good working relationships there with everyone. And I understand that the kids enjoy interacting with you as much as you enjoy them. And the teachers too. And that just makes you so much more effective working in the schools because you have a high level of trust. They know you, they know you. And so, just on behalf of county council and, uh, and the staff, I'd like to present you with a gift. And also this, we just want to, to remind you of how important you are to us. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our third employee is Ms. Jackie Greenwood. Okay, all right. You know, when you're looking at a crowd sometimes it's hard to. Let me, let me just at least tell you a little bit about this Jackie. So Jackie has been working for the county for 15 years. And she works out at the transfer station. And so, you know, the transfer station is, um, a collection point for solid waste, but it's also where we like aggregate all the solid waste. And then it is shipped or transported to a landfill up in Udon County. And Jackie operates the scanner. And she's the person who delivers customer service out there. And her background is she actually worked out there for Republic as a contractor. She's really been working with, with us for longer than 15 years. And I was talking with Josh Rowe the other day. He's our Public Works Director and the transfer station is under Josh. And Josh just said, you know, she's one of the best people to deal with because she is as good as her word. Uh, she's got a high level of integrity, which is, is great when you're dealing with payments and you're dealing with, uh, people. Uh, and she'll always go the extra mile. And, uh, she demonstrates that on a frequent basis. So if y'all don't mind joining me and just giving her a round of applause. And similarly, we've got another employee who couldn't be here this evening. Her name is Tammy Kindred. And I'll tell you a little bit about Tammy. So Tammy is heading actually 20 years of service. So she came to workforce back in 2004. But she has a 27-year career in law enforcement. So she started with the South Carolina Department of Corrections. She worked there for three years. Then she went to Department of Juvenile Justice, to DJJ, spent four years there. And then came to work for us in 2004 at the detention center. And so, she's been there 20 years. Uh, I understand from Captain Floyd and the sheriff that she's an integral part of the team out there at the detention center. That's a tough place to work. Uh, there's a lot of responsibility there. Uh, and she's a loyal employee. Uh, she's been there 20 years. They know they can count on her. There is something unfortunate that comes up with her though. At least unfortunate for us, she will be retiring at the end of the year after 27 years in law enforcement. We completely understand why and, uh, and are a little jealous yet, but we're gonna, we're gonna miss her. So that's something we'll have to deal with at the end of the year. So if y'all don't mind kind of joining me and giving her a round of applause. Okay, our, our next employee, also 20 years, is Ted Grant. I think it's the whole SRO department we're doing this in. Ted, like I said, he's been with the county for 20 years. And, uh, he started as a patrol deputy. I believe you did that for seven years.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then you were promoted to SRO, uh, and then you became head of the SRO division. So all the SRO offices worked for Ted. Um, and you know, like we were talking about, this position of SRO in this department is so important in our county. Because that protects kids when they're at school. And I think when we're speaking around the country, sometimes a school is not as safe an environment as maybe it used to be. And so, the role you play with that and also protecting our teachers and our school administrators is really important. Uh, and that's why it's such a privilege to recognize you tonight for 20 years of service. And we've got something to hopefully remind you of that and how important you are to Newberry County. And last, but not least. If you don't mind coming forward. And this is Ms. Zenda McCarty. And of course, you, they, uh, you probably know her. And then if you know her, you probably know her husband. He was police chief of the city of Newberry. So, uh, we've got two people that have devoted their careers to protecting the public. And, uh, let me just tell you a little bit about Zenda. So Zenda came back to workforce back in, uh, 1999 when she was 10. Uh, back in 1999, so 25 years ago. Uh, and she started in dispatch in, in the 911 Center. And she was later, uh, transitioned, I'll say, transitioned over to public safety where she worked with Mr. Tommy Longtown. He's in the audience here. He's our Director of Emergency Services and Public Safety. And Zenda plays a key role in, in basically keeping him straight, I guess you'd say. And kind of run of office, right?
Yeah.
Uh, and you know, she's, she's responsible for a lot. Because when we say public safety, there's a lot that goes into that. There's fire, uh, rescue, and these are volunteer services. And so, we've got a large number of volunteers that need assistance. And Zenda plays a critical role in that. We've got hazmat. Uh, and then we just have the operations of emergency preparedness and management. And so, and when we have an event at the EOC, which is our Emergency Operations Center, uh, Zenda has a key role to play during those events. And so, just, she does a lot. And that's why it's such a pleasure to recognize her and to give her this gift and this certificate. To show you how important you are to Newberry County.
Again, on behalf of all of county council, thank you for what you do. You make Newberry County work. You make it special. And you are awesome in your performance of your duty. So thank you so much. Item number four on our agenda is a proclamation recognizing the Towns in Tune event in Newberry County and Bay Bulls Newfoundland. Um, and I'll publish the proclamation, then call for the vote. Whereas Towns in Tune connects two communities from different countries by blending their unique histories and includes live music from Newfoundland and South Carolina. And whereas Don Gaudish from South Carolina Educational Television and Davian James from the Tindrum Media and Entertainment Incorporated in Canada, chose Newberry, South Carolina to be featured along with Bay, Bay Bulls Newfoundland. And whereas the filming of Towns in Tune began in June in Bay Bulls with individuals from Newberry and South Carolina participating. Whereas filming will take place in Newberry this month with visitors from Canada participating in several events that will engage members of the community. Whereas a variety of events will take place around the county, September 27th through September 29th, with the highlight being in the Towns in Tune Concert at Willingham and Sons on September 28th, 2024. Whereas the Towns in Tune event will be featured nationally on PBS showcasing both Newberry, South Carolina and Bay Bulls Newfoundland. Now therefore, it be proclaimed by the county council of Newberry that September 27th through 29th, 2024 will be Towns in Tune in Newberry County. And all residents are encouraged to participate in the multitude of activities. Is there a motion that we accept this, uh, resolution motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Mr. Hilt? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands and opposed likewise. That carries unanimously. Is there anybody here for the proclamation, Mr.? Machev, come on down, Machev. Let you get a picture with, uh, Mr. Shaker. He's, I've got a face made for radio. He's got one for a picture.
Can we have the folks on from Bay Bulls?
Yes.
All right. We can, we, we can't put them on there, so we can. We've got town manager, Ashley Wakum, Ethan Williams, Jason, I don't have my glasses on, Jason O'Brien, counselor, and then our mayor, Keith O'Driscoll, and we can't see him, but anyway.
Gotcha.
Thanks, y'all.
Thank you so much. Item number five on our agenda is a proclamation recognizing September 15 through October 15, 2024 as Hispanic Heritage Month in Newberry County. Again, we'll publish it and then ask you to vote. Whereas the County of Newberry encourages and promotes strong and inclusive communities that recognize and celebrate efforts to bring people together for a greater good. Whereas the County of Newberry commemorates the strong and visible roots of Hispanic and Latino heritage in the national, regional, and local landscape of the nation. Whereas September 15 through October 15, 2024, is National Hispanic Heritage Month in Newberry County. Again, we'll publish it and then ask you to vote. Whereas the County of Newberry encourages and promotes strong and inclusive communities that recognize and celebrate efforts to bring people together for a greater good. Whereas the County of Newberry commemorates the strong and visible roots of Hispanic and Latino heritage in the national, regional, and local landscape of the nation. Whereas September 15 through October 15 is National Hispanic Heritage Month in which many federal agencies, such as the Library of Congress, National Park Service, and Smithsonian Institute, joining and paying tribute to the generations of Hispanic Americans who has positively influenced and enriched our nation and society. Whereas the date September 15 is significant because it is the anniversary of independence for Latin America countries of Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, and additionally, Mexico and Chile celebrate their independence days on September 16 and 18 respectively. Newberry County has many families representing different Hispanic cultures and traditions from Puerto Rico, Mexico, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, El Salvador, Chile, and other South American countries. Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month has been celebrated since 1989, whereas the Hispanic community in Newberry County makes significant contributions to the cultural, educational, and economic vitality of Newberry County. Now therefore, it be proclaimed that the County Council of Newberry County, that September 15 through October 15 shall be National Hispanic Heritage Month in Newberry County in recognition of the many important and positive contributions of Hispanic culture to our nation, state, and county. Is there a motion? We approve this, second by Mr. Reader, is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands, and opposed likewise. Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Liz, are you gonna come forward and accept that, and whoever you'd like to bring with you, Jeff?
I want to thank Council for this, and I want to also invite council and everybody. We're having a Hispanic Heritage Festival at the college, at Newberry College, Monday from 6 to 9, and everybody's invited. We'll have mariettes, traditional dancing, a lot of food trucks, and it's gonna be a really nice event. I'd like to invite everybody. And thank you again, council, for this.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Right. Resolution 8-24 is a resolution to recognize and honor the members of the South Carolina State Guard to commend their all-volunteer force who embody the spirit of National Preparedness Month and to declare September as South Carolina State Guard Month in Newberry County. Again, we'll publish the resolution and ask you to vote on it. Whereas September is observed as National Preparedness Month to raise awareness about the importance of preparing for emergencies and to build resilience before disaster strike. Whereas counties and municipalities throughout Newberry County have been affected by a variety of disasters and emergencies, including ice storms, flooding, earthquakes, hurricanes, and the COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas the residents of Newberry County deeply appreciate the protection that the South Carolina State Guard has provided to the citizens of this great state for more than 350 years. Whereas authorized by the South Carolina Code of Laws, the State Guard is a professional military organization and component of the South Carolina Military Department, which supports a variety of critical, critical functions of the state, county, and municipal governments, such as providing disaster relief assistance to communities and local first responder organizations. Whereas the South Carolina State Guard traces its early manifestation to the formation of the Charleston Militia in 1670, the colony's first military organization protecting residents in its earliest days from pirates, foreign invaders, and Native American raids. Whereas throughout the Revolutionary War, the State Guard played a pivotal role in recapturing the South from British control with leaders such as Francis Marion, the Swamp Fox, Thomas Sumter, the Gamecock, and Andrew Pickens, the Wizard Owl, and additionally played key roles in later conflicts, such as the 19th century battle against the Spanish in Florida, the Mexican War, and the Spanish-American War. Whereas the State Guard is organized as an army brigade under the unit leadership of the commander and is comprised of his command staff, the chief of staff selection, the professional service command, and the first civilian support brigade, which is further divided into three battalions. The battalions are divided into companies, which correspond to the boundaries of six regions of the South Carolina Emergency Management Division. Whereas the State Guard trains new members at the McCrady Training Center in Eastover to provide a number of services, such as search and rescue operations, medical support, legal and engineering expertise, chaplain and counseling services, directing distribution of supplies, providing military funeral honors to veterans, executive governmental affairs that serves as a liaison to the governor's office and the legislature, as well as building relationships with the military and civic organizations across the state. Whereas serious natural or man-made disasters strike South Carolina, the State Guard provides boots on the ground with the mission to swiftly respond, safeguarding people and property, and to aid the community recovery in coordination with the National Guard, law enforcement, and other state, county, and municipal agencies. Whereas the State Guard is part of the South Carolina Military Department, directed by the Adjutant General, and its commander in chief is the governor of the state of South Carolina. Now therefore, it be resolved by the Newberry County Council that this resolution recognizes and honors the member of the South Carolina State Guard and commends all their volunteer force who nobly provides aid during times of disaster, who share a passion and strong commitment to their fellow South Carolinians, and who embody the spirit of National Preparedness Month, and to declare September as South Carolina State Guard Month in Newberry County. Is there a motion we accept this proclamation? Motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Mr. Fulmer. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands, opposed likewise, carries unanimously. All right, who's gonna come forward and, and take this? I believe Mr. Hamm is gonna take the.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate your service, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Glad to help.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
the terms of an intergovernmental agreement between Newberry County and the Newberry County Water and Sewer Authority. Mr. Shaker.
Yeah, thank you. So what, what this ordinance proposes to do is to agree to terms with the County Water and Sewer Authority. They've acted by resolution already. This ordinance would be our acceptance of that resolution. On the cost overruns for the wastewater treatment plant, which is one of our dozen projects that were approved on the 2022 capital project sales tax referendum. You know, one of the challenges that we faced moving forward with the 2022 CPST is the impact of inflation on the projects, to the degree that it, it began to bring into question the viability of the projects. Because in some cases, trying to build a complete project within the balloted amount would be extremely difficult. I mean, it's not just lowering the, maybe the level of finish, but actually implementing the project based on the description on the ballot. So a little different approach is being taken unless, you know, unless council would have an objection with this, but we've talked about this a little bit before. Instead of funding cost overruns on the back end of the projects, what we're proposing to do is to fund the cost overruns on the front end. And that would make the projects viable and not, you know, basically threaten the entire, the entire CPST, this iteration of the CPST. What we're looking at right now is an estimated $8.8 million overrun above the balloted amounts. You know, we had a ballot of projects that were approved a little over 37 million. You know, we're now looking at at least 45.9, close to $46 million worth of project expense. One of the things about inflation and that is not negative, I guess you could say, we've talked about the cost, but it has inflated also our collections. And that's what positions us and makes it us capable of funding some of these overruns on the front end. The reason that we're recommending an ordinance to you on the wastewater treatment plant project and not the other projects is the increase to construct the wastewater treatment plant project is considerably more than the other projects. And so the balloted amount is, you know, for the project was a little over 5 million, it was about 5.1. And we're looking at about a $4.4 million increase in the estimated cost of the project. And so what the resolution from the authority does and what this ordinance does is it agrees to fund that overrun now, and it acknowledges that if there are additional overruns above and beyond the current estimate, that the authority would pay for those overruns. And they could do that with cash on hand, they could issue a revenue bond, they could have another source of funding, that's something they would work out. But this just makes it clear that in the financial model for the sales tax, all we are programming in it for overruns on the treatment plant is the additional 4.4 million. If that kind of explains it. And the significance of that is overruns are funded in priority order, and so any projects that are downstream from the wastewater treatment plant would be impacted if you had overruns in excess of the additional 4.4 million. That's why it's really important that we hold the line at that amount. And this ordinance, on our, at least on our end, accomplishes that.
Okay. Any questions from council?
I was at the cog meeting last week, the other week when we voted on the, they had to do a section 128 to get that project approved before they got some funding, and they were supposed to be getting like 5.6 million from state and federal funds to help build that project. Is that included in that, or is that additional money? Or do you know?
Well, yeah, it is. Of course, they have other projects, too, that they're working on now. I know that there's, they're, they're.
This is just the Candice Creek.
Just for the Candice Creek wastewater plant? Yeah, I think, I think the overruns are such, and I think there's some additional scope they're gonna pursue, that they're gonna use that funding outside of the sales tax to do it.
Okay.
Yep. And then they've got a substantial amount of skip money that they've gotten for their other projects that I was kind of alluding to. So, yeah, that's a lot of capital investment they're gonna make in the system, and a lot of third-party funding, which is, is a good thing.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yes, sir.
Other questions from council?
Where does this project rank in our CPST projects?
Karen, is it five or six?
I think it's fifth.
Is it fifth?
Yeah. Fifth, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, this is not an insignificant percentage-wise increase over what was projected. If all of our projects were to be this kind of overrun, we wouldn't have enough funding. If we did this without bonding, they would have, we would have had to complete the first four projects before we even did this, so that we would know how much money we had I'm, I'm not gonna, this is a first reading of an ordinance. I won't vote against it, but I can tell you, I'm not happy with the fact that we've got a project on CPST that's double what we predicted it to be, and we've got 12 projects. And this is scary territory. So I won't, I won't vote against it to stop it, but I need some more information before we go through second and third readings.
Did anything change from the original plans?
No, it's just the, the cost of inflation. And we, and like I mentioned, we've had impacts on virtually all the projects. I guess an except, well, two, it appears that two exceptions will be the museum and the IT and security upgrades at the courthouse. I mean, it looks like we can work within the balloted amounts, and we may even be fortunate enough to bring them in under budget. The rest of the projects are quote-unquote over budget. And, and the financial model we have now, working through bond council, has all of these amounts, including, and I know y'all have concerns and we need to get you more information, I'm not trying to, you know, discount that in any way, but the, the overrun associated with the wastewater treatment plant and all the other projects are in that financial model now. And we feel this conservative.
But once we approve this by ordinance, it's law.
We're backing up.
And there's a difference between that and just seeing our projects as we go and seeing our construction cost. I, I just, I feel very uneasy about putting this, approving this ordinance. But I will not stop first reading.
I think we can carry that into comments. So is there a motion this be first reading? Mr. Reader makes the motion, is there a second? Mr. Shealy second. I, there, there's a couple of things, I, you know, with Mr. Cease's comments, I, I'd like to know, not I think so, before we commit to $4 million, whether or not some of that is going to this project or other projects. And then I, I enjoy some of my other councilmen, you know, if we lock on to fund these overages, what are we gonna do about the other overages? And so I, I'm gonna vote for it tonight, simply because it is simply first reading and my hands aren't tied yet. But without some significant explanation and more details, I would be hesitant, if not, find it impossible to vote again. So I would encourage staff to give us much more information on this before the next reading.
We'll get you a breakdown on that, Jeff.
Okay.
If you don't mind me clarifying, too, there were commitments made with all the other projects along this line. It was just the instrument used was different because the significance of the overruns, the comparison to the ballot amount was considerably less. And so we used letters of understanding for the other projects.
I don't think any of us could have thought that between the ballot and COVID and now, it wouldn't be over. I think 8.8 million is shocking. That's an incredible number. And, and so I think we have to be very wise in what we commit ourselves to in the, in the days ahead. So those will be my comments. I will, I will get it through first reading, just simply because we've got some time to work on it, but it's gonna take a lot more to get me there for another reading.
Okay.
Somebody else?
I concur. Totally concur.
Okay. All right. If nobody else, I'll, I'll call the question. All those in favor, by a show of hands, opposed likewise. We carry it unanimously tonight.
Oh, cool.
All right. County council, take any actions on matters from the 5 o'clock work session? Hearing none? Are there any appointments tonight? Hearing none? No public comments have been signed up for tonight. Any comments or report, request from our county administrator?